We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Strand.
Here.
Garrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. Health, the Public Health has launched a new campaign to promote the balance of breastfeeding for working mothers and their employers, as well as incentives for businesses interested in becoming infant-friendly workplaces and free classes for new mothers. Interestingly enough, we have 40 employers in the city that do that, and the city of Fargo is one of the participants. On April 11th, Dakota Medical Foundation and the Fargo-Cass County Public Health will host Day for Prevention, a live streaming learning event for area substance abuse and mental health professionals. A number of substance abuse professionals will speak on this important topic throughout the day, which runs from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on April 11th. Library, this is National Library Week, and this year's theme is Libraries Lead. The National Library Week celebrates how libraries of all types are places of learning, discovery, and entertainment. The Fargo Public Library has added an RB Digital to its digital downloads collection. The online service offers downloading of audiobooks and eBooks. Anybody with a valid Fargo Public Library card can access thousands of audio titles, including bestsellers, classics, and selections for teens and children. Content on RB Digital is always available and has an automatic return feature, which eliminates late and overdue fines. Fire, Chief Fury, I guess. The fire department recently spent several days working with a consultant to develop a new community-driven strategic plan. Meetings were held over several days with members of the community and the city of Fargo departments. The plan is scheduled to be completed on July 31st. The guy who came in there, didn't he tell you you're doing a great job? Almost didn't need him to come here, right there?
Oh, it's always room for improvement.
Oh, okay. Assistant Fire Chief, even Trump Tower starts on fire, and I thought of you, because Trump Tower started on fire, and they didn't have sprinklers.
Antiquated building codes.
That president lives in an antiquated building. My God. The Assistant Fire Chief, Gary Lorenz, was recently named Fire Chief for the city of Grand Forks. Lorenz has been his duties in Grand Forks on May 7th after serving Fargo community for 28 years. Fire Inspection Investigator Doug Nelson has been named Fire Marshal by the North Dakota Attorney General. Nelson began his duties on March 19th after serving the Fargo community for 12 years. Fire Investigator Jamie Garvey recently completed training and testing necessary to become a certified fire investigator through the International Code Council. A lot of guys getting education, huh? Are any of them smarter than you, or?
Wait.
Police. Personnel from the Fargo Police Department provided different aspects of security for Vice President Mike Pence's recent visits to Fargo. Chief Todd reports he received many compliments and gratitude from the Secret Service for all those involved in planning and operations of the visit. Chief, we probably have a picture of you and the Vice President somewhere in your office now?
Yeah.
Retired John Sanderson passed away on March 25th. John served with the Fargo Police Department for 27 years, founded the SWAT team, and was the team's first commander. Another longtime Fargo PD employee, Gert Nubauer, died on March 21st. She worked with the department for 33 years. And you're going to have memorial services for those people, right?
Already.
Already. And then lastly, there's somebody on the commission that always wishes happy birthday to everybody. He kind of knows their dates, times, and everything. And so, we had kind of missed John's birthday.
Nice. Yay.
I read all the birthday wishes and comments made on the Commissioner Strand's Facebook page, and there were many. John's responses were humble and considerate, which is a reflection of a man I've come to know and appreciate. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
That's good.
I hope we embarrassed you. See, Order Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving Items 7 and 15 from the Consent Agenda to Regular Agenda and adding an extra item to the end of the Regular Agenda to approve the settlement agreement and release for property located at 4027 Copperfield Court South?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Grinberg and Pepcorn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tony, you say aye too?
I do.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March 26, 2018 Regular Meeting?
So moved.
Strand, is there a second? Grinberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 26, with the movements of the other items off?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's a competition here. Thank John, God, I didn't strand. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. We're going to go to the Regular Agenda. Is there Presidentation on the Matbus Echo Benefits in commemoration of Earth Week 2018? Matt Peterson to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Next week starts Earth Week, so Matbus always likes to run kind of a week-long campaign, just promoting environmental benefits for our cities. With Dilworth, Morehead, Fargo, West Fargo, we do have fixed route transit in all four cities, and all commissions play a part in the transit system, which is fantastic. Some of the local contributions that Matbus does, you know, we reduce harmful carbon emissions. Generally speaking, our buses can carry up to about 85 people, some of our larger vehicles. If you think about that, it's about 55 gallons worth of fuel a day that we help kind of save the area. Less trucks on the road, less cars on the road, less people on the road. Not everybody that rides our system is someone who has to. We have several choice riders. We have some riders who, you know, choose to hop on Matbus versus having a personal vehicle, and those are really the passengers that we like to ensure that our system is including, as well as, you know, the NDSU students, the college students, Concordia, MSUM, we're pretty, we have a pretty high population of NDS, or of college students up here. Nationwide, the U.S. has about 10 billion trips, or 10 billion passenger trips per year. Again, it's about 54 billion miles that passengers actually ride on city transit systems across the U.S., which is a pretty big number, considering the amount of cities that have transit, the amount of money that you put in there, and a lot of people look at those big vehicles, the expense to them, and they wonder, what are they really doing for the cities or for the environment? And that's really what we're doing. Annually, about 4 billion gallons of gas per year is saved by people who are using public And then for the Matbus impact, approximately, we had 2 million, about 2 million rides in 2017. It's just over 7,500 rides per day. Again, about 50% of those rides are college students in the area, and then we do have 25 routes that link the Fargo-Morehead, Dilworth, and West Fargo area, along with our paratransit on-demand service. Next week, Matbus will be running a promotion to allow anyone who wants to ride fixed route to hop onboard with just an empty aluminum can that we do recycle in and bring over to Mincota at the end of the week, and just try and get the message about Earth Week and doing what you can to stay green.
Very good. Any questions by the Commissioners?
Very good. Thanks, Matt.
Update by the Sound the Alarm Event. Steve Dirksen to explain.
Good evening, mayors and commissioners. As you know, we have some great non-governmental organizations that we partner with every year to do different things, and the fire department regularly partner with the American Red Cross and that chapter. And if you remember, last fall, we were working on a project called Sound the Alarm to place smoke detectors in homes, and we were all set to go with that, and then three events happened. They were all three hurricanes that depleted the Red Cross staff from around the country, and our area, we had a number of the staff from the Red Cross, ended up being deployed in Florida and in Texas during that timeframe. So we rescheduled that event, and we were kind of hoping that in last September, that through the Sound the Alarm event, this has been something that the Red Cross has pushed around the country, and we were hoping to have been the millionth, have installed the millionth smoke alarm through the Red Cross in our community last fall. Well, since we didn't have our event, we didn't get to do that, so we were rescheduled, and tonight we have Lynn Spurrel, the Executive Director, and Gretchen Helmstedt from the Red Cross are here just to kind of talk about where we're at with the event and give you a couple ideas. We're only a couple weeks away, so.
Very good.
Good evening, and thanks for the time tonight. I'm excited to talk about the rescheduled event, which will be April 28th, Saturday morning, roughly 9:00 to 1:00, and we'll be installing smoke alarms free of charge in neighborhoods that have been selected, in this case, by Chief and his staff. And these neighborhoods are considered to be more at risk to loss of life due to home fire. About 80% of the responses that we make are home fires, and as we're honored to provide the care after the home fire, we're more excited to do this preparedness event. Nationally, we have saved at least 385 lives through this program since 2014, where we've been in the home, installed smoke alarms. The family has unfortunately had a fire, but fortunately, everyone got out with their lives. And so, we have been doing this program, will continue to do this program, and this one is part of a national event, starts on April 30th, goes through May 13th, where over 100 cities throughout the United States will be doing a significant Sound the Alarm, Save a Life event. Fargo is one of those communities. We will also be in West Fargo, Morehead, and Castleton during that time, too. So very thankful to Chief Dirksen and his staff for continuing to partner with us. Excited to work with the city of Fargo. Thank you, Mayor Mahoney, for your support, and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this event. I did bring a little information that I'll leave behind with you as well.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Mr. Chairman, I still have a question for the chief. So how do you determine what neighborhoods and what goes into that?
Well, as you know, we collect all kinds of data, and we look at our neighborhoods and where we've had fires, where we had smoke detectors that were installed or weren't installed, and where we had fires recently that we can make a big impact, because those are great places to drive, drive into and say, hey, you had a fire in your neighborhood, they didn't have a smoke detector, do you? And, you know, so we know on our side of things, prevention is always a better deal. You know the old adage, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. The Red Cross has great data that says for every dollar spent in prevention saves $4 in response. So we want to drive that home. Smoke detectors save lives, sprinkler systems save lives. Mayor pointed it out earlier, there was a death in New York City in a building that should have been sprinkled, wasn't, and they had a fatality, so. But we look at the data in the community, where are we having issues, and where's the greatest need? A lot of that pulls on a socially-economic.
Can I just ask one more follow-up? So is it, are there apartments, and is it a wide range of housing, or is it?
This program is identifying for homes. You know, apartment owners should have that in there, and that should be part of their responsibility to make sure that smoke detectors are in there. It's the residents who live in there to make sure they're maintained and operated, so if it starts beeping, get a new battery, put it in. You know, for the last number of years, the codes have required them to be hardwired in, but they also always have a battery backup. But we're going to put in 10-year smoke detectors that have a sealed lithium-ion battery. Smoke detectors should be changed out every 10 years, vacuum them once a year, twice a year, and if you do have batteries, change your clock, change your battery. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll just jump to 30, because we're going to have some discussions here tonight, might take some time. So Mayor's Blue Ribbon Commission on Addiction started almost a year ago or so, and I think you're going to, Mr. Strand, we're going to have an update or a report, is that correct?
It is, Mayor Mahoney, and I believe we have Dr. Baird and Ruth, or Anne Malmberg here from the Blue Ribbon Commission. I'll let them continue their report, but as a summary going into it, we, we in Fargo in the last two years have made immense traction and have some significant quantifiable successes as a community in our willingness and desire to address the issues of addiction, and especially the opioid issues. So maybe I'll have more comments after that, but as a preface, I just couldn't express more how proud I am of people in our law enforcement and in our public health departments and with the Dakota Medical Foundation and the Mayor's Commission. The amount of effort, the clarity of focus, the results you're getting, which we'll see today, are taking us the right direction. You just all need to be commended and thanked for that.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Strand and Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Dr. John Baird, Health Officer for Fargo-Cass Public Health, and I'm also the county coroner. And you know, as you know, addiction has been a longstanding issue for us. A number of statistics we have available in our state show alcohol overuse, both in our state and county, and drug abuse and addiction are also present in our, in our community. Stigma is a common problem, and people that have problems with addiction are often looked down on as weak and not able to control themselves, and that's something that we must combat all the time. Opioid abuse has grabbed our attention nationally as well as locally. There, I think there's some historical context to that as to how we've gotten to the point of having increased opioid use. I think some of the medical practices over the years and things have affected that, and it's something that we're dealing with as we go forward. Opioids, especially fentanyl and its derivatives, are very toxic and deadly substances, and we've had increasing number of opioid-related deaths here as well as across the country. It's gotten to the point of exceeding motor vehicle accident deaths from opioids. Now, what I passed out to you was a handout, just as a coroner, I've compiled some statistics, just watched over the years opioid-related deaths, drug-related deaths, and alcohol-related deaths. And 2016, as you can see, was a, was a bad year for us. We had 31 opioid-related deaths compared to the previous couple of years averaging in the, in the 20s. And actually, in February and March, we had three or four opioid deaths that really grabbed the attention. Some parents spoke out, there was a lot of news media about it, and it really got us looking at it. And then in October of 2016, the five mayors in our area called together a Blue Ribbon Commission on Addiction, which is a multi-discipline and multi-jurisdictional group to look at addressing this crisis. And much has been done by this Blue Ribbon Commission and by others to address the problem that we're, that we're dealing with. And I just wanted to give you that introduction, just the statistics. You know, the death statistics are not the only thing we look at, but they, they're very graphic. Every death that we have is a tragedy for the families and friends, and so it's, it's good that in 2017, we actually had a decrease, just looking at the opioid-related deaths. We had 31 opioid-related deaths in 2016, and they decreased to 17 deaths in 2017. And whether that's going to continue as a trend, it's hard to say. 2018 is very early. We have had at least one death and some other ones that we're waiting on to see the results, but hopefully, we can continue down the course of improving things. I wanted to introduce Anne Malmberg, who is the Director of the Blue Ribbon Commission, and she's going to actually talk about the commission itself and what's been going on.
Thank you, John. Good report.
Well, this is a complex issue and multifaceted, and we are looking at it as a commission, which has a planning and coordinating group of about 12, 14, and then we have a steering group, many of you are present on it, that has over 40 people. And we want to just work both Cass and Clay County, Fargo, West Fargo, Horace, Dilworth, Morehead, to address the issues in a lot of different ways. So I put a few things down to just begin the discussion of what we're, what we're trying to do. I wouldn't even say that we're hitting it, because I was at a meeting with Chief Todd last week, and crime continues to be up, and petty crime related to addiction issues, so. But we're trying to get a handle on some of the things going on. And the first category is primary prevention. We're so blessed to have Ruth and Dr. Baird chair this group committee, along with Rob and Litke-Sahl from Fargo-Cass Public Health, and we have a broad group of people talking about prevention, getting ahead of it. On June 7th, there's going to be a report out. For the first time, we did a social capital survey and tried to determine what it is that would prevent children from using substances. And the report out is June 7th. Mayor Mahoney is actually going to introduce Dr. Jeff Schatz from Fargo Public Schools, who has helped to lead this project, to talk about what our youth risk behaviors are identifying and what are things we could do to change the community, to make it more friendly to youth. And just some teasers for that, we'd love to have you all there. 25% of our youth in Fargo schools and the parochial schools directly just in Fargo have said that they do not have a person that they connect to, that they could go to for help. So 25% of our children say they don't have a connection, which is shown to have a correlation to using substance use and other risky behaviors. So that's coming up, and we've done a lot of work with our Cures Grant around secondary prevention, getting Narcan out there, take-back sites out there. We appreciate Commissioner Strand actually helps on that committee, and we're so grateful for that. And we're just doing a lot of variety of things to do secondary prevention. Treatment and recovery, I feel like, is probably the area we've made the most progress. Sanford and Essentia and Family Healthcare and others providers have been identified who agree to prescribe narsboxone, which is one of the medication-assisted treatments for addiction, specifically for opioids, and it's been proven to increase the success of ongoing recovery by 60%. And so, in addition, we now have CMS, the Community Medical Services Methadone Clinic, and they have over 190 clients as of today. They just opened up in June, and our Cures Grant is actually helping to pay for that treatment. In fact, at least eight of those people who have received support for that treatment have been pregnant, which is another alarming issue within our community that we hope to address. We just formed a group to reduce substance use during pregnancy, because adoption, or foster care continues to rise dramatically. Babies are taken out of the home, people need treatment. It's both a Cass and a Clay issue. I've heard from both Cass and Clay, they can have two to three IV-drug-using moms accessing their facilities per week. And so, this is an area, we're just really trying to get all the stakeholders at the table to begin communicating, and that's already helped to break down some barriers, and now we just are going to begin protocols and different things that can drive this in a different direction, where moms can get support, medication-assisted treatment if that's needed, and keep their babies at the time they're born. We have a new transportation service that is helping transport people with, who have detox needs, between the Fargo Social Detox Center and the Clay County Medical Detox Center and the Cass County Jail and Sanford and Essentia Emergency Rooms. That literally has been only open a couple months, and the first 18 days, we saw 60, they made 60 transports. And of course, if you translate those dollars, if they would have happened from FM ambulance or Fargo Police, we've already saved, there's been a significant savings in time and use of resources. So we're excited about that, and more to come with that. One area that our expert panel really have been pushing is needing one call, a one-call number to call if you need help, and we're working with 211 and First Link to get funding for a navigator who would be available 40 hours a week, but have resources, real-time, where they can tell people where to go today and now, and then they'd work with the online phone support through First Link to make sure you always know who to call, and we can always navigate this complicated system, because it's dependent on insurance, it's dependent on other resources, and from day to day, we want to know that if Share House has beds, the person can go there. If addiction treatment is needed, they can go to Drake and navigate people and help them get help as soon as possible. So we continue to work on that. We've struggled with finance, getting financial support, and we're hoping to have something in place by September.
Very good.
So that's kind of quick. Any, any questions or comments, or?
Mr. Strand, no comment?
Well, I'll join in for a moment. You know, just, just some highlights from the last year and a half or so, some bullet points of accomplishments that have gone on, and you've mentioned some of them, Anne and Dr. Baird, but I'll add some others, like Drug Court is just having an amazing impact in our community. The take-back sites are going very strong. We have Nikki Anderson, who started an art therapy program at the Plains Art Museum for families, and is having a tremendous reach into, into the homes of people affected. The detox and the transportation and the role of Jan Eliasen and Jeremy Kelly with the Syringe Program are just amazing, what we're doing here in Fargo. To have started a methadone clinic without public backlash is terrific. In this day and era, it's called for, and it's delivering, and the numbers of families they're saving is just so quantifiable, but this is Fargo for you. We're making action, and we're making decisions, and we're going forward, because lives are on, on the line. The Good Samaritan Law was affected at the Bismarck level with local, local influence. The, the access of Narcan in the community is just so tremendous. Hundreds of kits going out to people, so this all adds up, whether, in saving lives, whether you've got methadone clinics or, and people are even getting treated in jail. If you're in medical-assisted treatment, it's continuing into jail now. This is just tremendous, what we, what we've been doing here right now. I believe this week, you have a peer-coach academy going on. If, and one last thing is F5 and housing, what we're doing in our community, but Anne, if you might mention the peer academy that's going on, the peer coaching, which is just terrific.
Through our, through our Cures Grant, we were able to bring Minnesota Resource Center, which is a recovery coaching, into the community, and they are providing free training for 18 people who are in recovery themselves, have to be in recovery over two years, and will, after a week of training, reach out and provide support to people with, who need recovery. And it's been proven to be really effective, and obviously, this is a lower-cost strategy of getting people support that they need, and so we're very excited, and we've got 18 people there.
Thank you all for your good work you're doing, and pass it on to your staffs, if you would, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've done an excellent job. Real proud of you, and John might even report this to National League of Cities, because he thinks the program has something to talk about, so we're excited about that. We'll now go to public hearings. Thank you, John. City Otter Steve Craig, we're going to talk about the special assessments for sewer repairs. This won't be controversial, will it, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The city of Fargo has a sewer repair assistance program. If it's a qualified repair, which means that it, we need to do the repair at the main, then the city will contribute part of the cost, usually comes out to about a third of the cost. The balance, the homeowner can put on special assessments through a petition process. In essence, they tell us that they want to finance or pay for this sewer repair over a period of time through the special assessment process. In the past, we've kind of done this about mid-year, and it caused some confusion as to when the repair was done and that type of thing. So this year, we have about a year and a half worth on there. It goes from about mid-2016 and all of 2017, and then we're going to call it the 2017 sewer repair, and then going forward, each year will match up with the year when the repair was done. So next year, when I'm standing here, in early 2019, it'll be the 2018 sewer repairs. We have a total of about 777,000 that we're, that we're adding to people's specials this year. So again, that's about a year and a half worth. We've sent out the notices to everybody to let them know, they can either pay them off now or let this go through to assessment, and this is their time to come to the public hearing. Now, if there's any questions about this one?
Very good. Questions, Commissioners? Is anyone present who wishes to speak regarding these assessments? Anybody who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. I think sometimes people have to understand they will get notices sometimes in the mail or somebody will have some kind of special deal, and just if they kind of keep to the city, they can figure this out. Otherwise, you might be buying insurance policies and/or... Otherwise, you might be buying insurance policies and/or other policies that you don't really need to do, because you will put it on their specials and they can pay it off over time. You don't have to pay it all upfront, so. May I have a motion?
A move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Pepper and Strand. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepper.
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item B, transfer of Class B alcoholic beverage license from Main Liquors, doing business as Main Liquors, to Dakota Liquors, doing business as Main Liquors at 4,000 Main Avenue, continued from the 32618 regular meeting. Steve Sprague to explain.
Yeah, for all of these that are coming up here, we had to continue them. We had some problems scheduling our liquor control meeting, and so we had to push them out one meeting. So in this case, the Class B is an on, or, excuse me, off-sale liquor license. The original, or the owner of the business is retiring, and so he's found somebody that wants to buy it, and so they're buying it and going to operate it as an off-sale business.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak in regards to this transfer? Is anyone who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
A move to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepper.
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item C, transfer of a Class F A alcoholic beverage license to B A B, 32nd Avenue South, doing business as Mo's Southwest Grill, to H R P Fargo, doing business as the Tavern Grill at 3233 45th Avenue, or 45th Street South, continued from the 32618 meeting. Steve Sprague again to explain.
And again, this is a transfer application for the F A license. The Mo's sold, and the new owners didn't want to, you know, really deal with the alcohol. And so, the license became available, found a willing buyer in the Tavern Grill. They're doing a new construction on 45th Street, so we'll have a new business down there to welcome to Fargo. Gone through the background check, there are no issues with the applicants, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval from Liquor Control.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in regards to this transfer? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
A move to approve?
Pepper.
Second.
Grinberg? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I'm Mr.
Garrick?
Yep, Steve, the F A licenses aren't limited, so why do we allow them to be transferred, especially if the business is no longer there? What I'm saying is, the license is going off-premise, so why would we then allow a transfer for it?
Well, Commissioner, that, it was, that's the way the licenses were originally structured, and in 2014, we said any new licenses issued won't be allowed to be transferred. And so, what the original issuer, or the person originally had the license, they're just trying to recover some of the cost of the liquor license.
This one issued before 2014?
This one was issued before 2014. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepper.
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes, aye. Item D, transfer of a Class F A R Z alcoholic beverage license from Mosaic Foods, doing business at Mezzaluna, to Snelling Hospitality at Mezzaluna, at 309 Robert Street North. This is, again, continued from 326.
And again, this is a case where, you know, the Watsons have done a great job of running Mezzaluna, been a great addition to the city. They want to move on to something new and are actually selling to one of their longer-term employees. And so, this is just a straight transfer of an existing business, staying in that location. There are no issues with the background check, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval.
Are they going to change the menu? No.
I don't know that.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the transfer of this license? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Strand got in on this. Pepper, do you want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepper?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Now, we're finally to the point people are here for, I think. Transfer of Class A alcoholic beverage license from Classic Foods, doing business at Ground Round Restaurant, to F S B Associates Cowboy Jack's at 506 Broadway North, continued from the 22618 meeting and the 32618 meeting. Steve Sprague to explain.
So it did originally come to Liquor Control, and we requested some additional information. Came to us in February. We heard the additional information and a lot of testimony in March, and now it's coming before the city commission for the scheduled public hearing. So there are, I did put some information in your packets. There, one of the things I think that is important to reference is 251508, Section C, which lists the eight criteria to keep in mind while you're deciding whether or not this license should be issued. There have been a number of questions about the class of license, and sometimes, you know, we have to keep in mind that the class of license, years ago, the Class A was the only license we had. It was before we established the F A, which is, requires the food and the alcohol. And so, although the A does not require food, we have some restaurants in town that have an A license that, you know, you wouldn't think would be a bar, but that's what the A license is kind of being called. Examples of that are Red Lobster and Paradiso. You know, they have, they probably sell a fair amount of alcohol, but they also, you know, are primarily a restaurant. One of the reasons that people like having that is that they don't have to report what their food sales or their total sales are, food and alcohol. And so, for a business competition standpoint, that may be a reason that somebody may want that license. The other item that was kind of brought up at Liquor Control was the F A requires more food sales than alcohol sales, but menu options can affect, you know, your meeting that ratio. In other words, if you are selling steak and lobster, it's probably easy to meet that fifty-fifty. If you're selling less expensive food items, it makes it a little tougher to make that fifty-fifty. So, and then, one final thing that I just wanted to mention was, there was some confusion as to when minors are allowed in a facility that serves alcohol. And there are essentially two times that a minor's are allowed in a facility that serves alcohol. Both of them, in both cases, it needs to be a restaurant. The minors can be unaccompanied, so they can be, you know, two twenty-year-olds or something like that, if it's in a restaurant where the food sales exceed the alcohol sales and the alcohol is mixed in a separate room from where it's being consumed. The second case is a little more straightforward, and it's just if they're accompanied by their parents, then they can be where alcohol is being served. So I think that's, I don't know if you have other questions?
The toasted frog could theoretically do that, but they choose not to. So the restaurant can decide whether they have children.
Correct. That's the other thing, is that a number of businesses will say minors can be present until nine o'clock, or no minors allowed in some cases, and they would meet the food sales requirements, but it's a business decision. They may look at, you know, we only have limited seating, and, you know, we don't want to be trying to accommodate families and that type of thing, so.
Mr. Grinberg?
Steve, the Red Lobster, then, per your explanation, where is the Red Lobster bar?
You know what?
Is it separate, you say, from the dining area? Is that what?
To be honest, I've never been in the Red Lobster.
Unless by Paradiso, then.
Paradiso does have a separate bar area.
That's what makes him eligible under the.
Yes.
Red Lobster has a separate bar.
Do they? Okay. Yep. Oh, and one final thing, and then I'll sit down, but we had a split vote at Liquor Control. Commissioner Garrick was not able to attend, and so, we had two voting for and two voting against, so that.
Perfectly clear, didn't it?
Yeah. So I don't know if there's any other questions regarding the alcohol licensing part of it? Okay, thank you.
So to start this off, what we'll do is we'll ask the people who are for this to speak first, if you don't mind. So is anyone willing here to want to speak for this tactics tax? And just bear in mind that the Commissioners do have the stuff we had from the alcohol meeting from before, so.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. My name is Sally Lefler. My business partner, Jason Overland, and I own Beyond Running and Outer Most Layer at 516 Broadway and 518 Broadway. First, I just want to say, we too are protective of the North Broadway neighborhood. Our business and customers have called it home for over eleven, almost eleven years. We consider the residents and fellow business owners on the North Broadway our partners in the community and our neighbors. Many of the people here who may speak out against are patrons of my business. I am patrons of their business. I consider them friends and neighbors, and so, I have the best interests of this neighborhood in mind. Being between the Bismarck and the Empire has presented a host of issues over many years. From intoxicated patrons entering our stores to having windows smashed out after hours, I certainly do not welcome the idea of another establishment that would bring more of the same to the north end of Broadway. When the idea of Cowboy Jack's came up, people in the neighborhood started to talk. Whispers of a wild cowboy bar with crazy drink specials began to swirl, and I was just as nervous as anyone else, if not more so. It's two doors down from my businesses. It's in the original building where my business began. We have seen two businesses close, Josie's Corner and McNeil and Friends, and they've left the block. So the idea of a wild crowd of binge drinkers joining the crowd of the Empire and the Bismarck on our block almost had my pen on the petition to stop the license transfer, but I didn't sign it. I decided to do a little more research first. I spoke with our property owners, who also own 506 Broadway. I scoured Cowboy Jack's website, social media. I also had several discussions with the prospective owner, Dave Erickson, and I asked him some hard questions. How is this going to be different than the infamously wild downtown Minneapolis Cowboy Jack's? What of this mechanical bull that everybody thinks is crazy? How about drink specials? What are you doing to curb binge drinking? What about security? Can I mention? It's on my block. I have a concern for security. Through my research, I failed to find any evidence that the establishment Mr. Erickson proposes is a problematic bar wishing to join the ranks of downtown. It's a franchise, but it's not simply a duplicate of other locations bearing the same name. There will not be outrageous discounting of drinks, from what I've been told. There are no plans for a mechanical bull. The business will focus on lunch and dinner specials with a full kitchen open late. There will be activities that are family-friendly. And to me, that sounds pretty awesome addition to downtown, especially in a block that sees less traffic than most. Contrast that with the two-cent taps from eight to ten from another establishment downtown Broadway. I think it's unfair to assume a new establishment would follow suit with these deep discounts when they have shown no evidence nor expressed plans to draw business using these tactics. Mr. Erickson also revealed to me that he is required to follow franchise guidelines for operation of food and drink establishment, and he has no intention of resorting to a drinks-only business plan. I've also seen the rendering of the proposed improvements to 506, the space, again, Beyond Running once was in. Pouring the immense effort, time, money into that building with a years-long franchise obligation really leaves no doubt in my mind that Cowboy Jack's would elevate, not weaken, the vibrancy of the block. Since the closing of Josie's Corner and McNeil and Friends, our business has seen a decrease in the shopping traffic and an increase in undesirables, loitering, wandering intoxicated, and fighting. I believe that bringing a much-needed, family-friendly establishment, the north end of Broadway, would help us take back that block. My conversations with Mr. Erickson have led me to believe that he is a good fit for North Broadway and the neighborhood. I believe he would be a vigilant owner and has given me no reason to believe he has nothing but the best of intentions for his new business venture, and I told him so. I said, I stick my neck out for you, and it's not the way it should be. But again, I have no reason not to believe him. I would welcome him as a neighbor. I agree there are issues that are in need of attention regarding undesirable activity downtown, and there's certainly discussions to be had about liquor licenses, but I don't think that this is that conversation. We can't let frustration with current issues in downtown impact the decision to welcome a new and what I would believe would be a positive addition to downtown. With that, I would like to give my recommendation that Cowboy Jack's be approved for the necessary liquor license at that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Oh, no. Breaking stuff already.
Hi, I'm Austin Morris. I'm one of the property owners of the North 500 block that encompasses this particular property that we have the proposal for a new tenant. I'll give a brief summary of my feelings on it, but overall, we, today, we have an opportunity to have a unique and exciting new restaurant downtown and end one north of the railroad tracks that serves a different purpose and a different demographic than is currently being served across downtown, and we're super excited about it. I love the concept that Dave and the architect have come up with, and you guys have seen that. It'll add a pretty unique option for restaurant goers downtown. Cowboy Jack's is poised to draw a new customer base north of the tracks. When we were listing this property, we had it listed for twelve months, and the common theme with driving a retail tenant was the challenge of getting folks past the tracks. We had countless meetings with different retail tenants. We proposed it to retail tenants that weren't in this location, and we actively listed it for that period of time and then came across this opportunity and looked at it very closely. A few items that I think are really positive, their proven food and menu track record, they have other locations you can look at, you can look at their menu, you can look at the emphasis on food, you can look at their seven-day operations. They're open seven days a week. They serve families and ages, all different ages and demographics, seven days a week. And we love that. We wouldn't be sitting here today if it was just a bar. Their investment in this building, commitment to their community is evident in their marketing across the board. They, the economic impact as an employer is evident in our community. They're going to drive a lot, a lot of new business, a lot of new jobs here, and with a unique concept that's different, that'll draw people from south and west Fargo and the existing downtown community. I'll just share a listing of things that I think are pretty unique for downtown, especially this concept. Their menu item has a hundred items on it with many organic food options. It has terrific variety and great price points. A lot of the times downtown, you have this feeling from people who don't maybe live, work, or play downtown that there's a lot of restaurants that have pretty expensive food and beverage options that make it seem more difficult to palate on a day-to-day basis unless it's a special occasion. So more options are better. It's all ages-friendly, seven days per week. Currently, we have ten options that feature that. We have three pizza joints, three American food, one Mexican, if I could read my writing, one German beer hall, one grilled cheese. These are great options, but we need more, and we need more options that are affordable, that serve families seven days a week till nine P.M. I also love that they serve brunch. I went out this weekend to look for a brunch spot downtown, and Burn Bob's is a fabulous place, and it was full. So the nearest place that we went was the Boiler Room, which serves brunch on Saturday and Sunday. Great option, but we need more options like that. We need more brunch and breakfast options on the weekends. We need more brunch and breakfast options on the weekends. A few other unique items, we only have two rooftop patios downtown. We have, that I'm aware of, Rambus. We have Hodo, and then we have a back patio at Twist. This not only features a front Broadway-facing patio, but also a rooftop. So it's another unique option, drawing crowd, drawing traffic to the north side. They have a small event space on second floor that'll be rentable to small groups like grooms dinners and weddings, and it's not going to take the place of our larger event spaces, but it's another unique option. I love that they're open for lunch daily, which I mentioned, and I also love the historic preservation of the existing McNeil Building. We're preserving a historic building while adding on to it in a manner that's aesthetically pleasing and kind of urban environment. So I would, I would obviously recommend proposing that you guys approve this. It's a unique niche, experience-based restaurant that would be fabulous for this block. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question real quick? So Austin, can you talk, can you just give us a ballpark number of what will be spent to upgrade the building as, from what it is now to what, if this is approved, what it would be?
That's a great question. Maybe Ben would know.
Okay. No, that's fine, but just if someone could answer that.
A million and a half.
And maybe the Renaissance Zone, are they going to be using any Renaissance Zone funds or anything like that?
This block was already previously approved for Renaissance Zone. We just haven't given any parameters to move it past that point.
So at this point, that's an unknown?
Yeah, it's unknown, but we got approval, I believe Derek Point would put it, we got approval to a certain point, but we needed to provide specifications, plans, and other things.
So if you don't mind, I can, if you don't mind me making a couple editorial comments, a million and a half dollars invested in downtown on a block that right now has three empty storefronts. I think this is, that's something that we have to look at. And I do think, I hope we're not getting this confused, the two problem bars are an issue that the liquor control needs to address. And there are some things that we can do. One of them is to put them on probation, and then if they don't start improving, this should have been done long ago, but we can do it now, saying if they don't start improving their safety and their, and the calls, they'll lose their license. And so we do have some options that we haven't used up to this point, and so I do think that's a legitimate thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Austin. Anybody else present who wants to speak in favor of the project? Have all the commissioners seen the rendering of what they're going to do?
Yeah, I can provide that if you have not.
Tony, have you seen it?
My name's Dave Erickson. I'm the applicant franchisee of Cowboy Jack's. Was going to speak a little bit of the technicalities kind of of an A license and also kind of how we hope to improve the block. There obviously, with the discussion just kind of going on, has been a bad reputation, I guess, on that side of Broadway. It's, it's our, you know, intentions to, as you can see through the rendering, to brighten up the space, to make it more secure, to install exterior cameras if necessary, and kind of use every security option that we can, whether or not, you know, depending on what days or, you know, what the neighborhood, I guess, kind of sees fit, we definitely want to help provide a safe setting for our guests and neighboring guests as well. We don't want people leaving our place to be heckled by loiters and that type of thing as well, so we definitely want to make sure that the space is clean. As far as the A license, if you can see in the rendering too, the entrance is separate from where the bar is located at on the floor plan and everything, so there will be that barrier separation similar to Buffalo Wild Wings or, I think, I guess Pepper's kind of has a separation between their bar area and, and, and the dining area where all ages will be allowed. And speak on the promotion side of things, you know, we are located or proposing to be located on, on kind of the entertainment district of the state, of the city, Broadway. And so, I mean, there will be a weekend crowd, we're not denying that, but can't survive just on weekends. So we definitely have very strong intentions of creating daytime traffic, creating, you know, weekday traffic to try to improve us as a business and to kind of seek all customers and to be with inside the Cowboy Jack's concept. So also, with, with the amount of investment that's going to be needed, you know, we're looking between, I mean, I guess, I'm unfamiliar with necessarily the construction costs that the building owner's going to incur. Obviously, that's reflective in my rent, but the, the investment that I am putting in is around $750,000. I would say a third of that is going to be in kitchen equipment. So it's not something that we take lightly. It's, it's not something we're going to rip out overnight and, and, and start a bar, beer, you know, just beer liquor-only type of establishment. I have a 10-year commitment with Cowboy Jack's, hope to continue on further if things are going well, obviously, and as I have intentions to hopefully develop other markets inside the state of North Dakota. But yeah, I guess those kind of are, provide maybe some, some other facts, I guess, about the project, and I guess if you have any questions, I'm definitely open.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a couple questions? So Dave, the, the, the number of employees, what is your ballpark figure, what your, what the number will be?
Between the kitchen, the hosts, and servers, bartenders, probably about 60, I would say. You know, I would say probably 40 of them will be part-time, 20 of them will be full-time.
And so you were talking about the franchise agreement, and so the $750,000, a lot of that is your own money that you're putting up?
Yes. Yep, yeah, that, that is all my money.
And then can I ask you, so you have a $2 burger special, can you talk about that?
Yeah, that's a promotion that they run, I believe, on Tuesdays. This has been very successful with that. Obviously, that kind of messes with the ratio a little bit as far as the 50/50 kind of compliance issue goes. And I guess that kind of leads into, yeah, another point being that if I don't meet the 50/50, that $750,000 investment is, is gone. That's, that's kind of how the ordinance is written. That's what, you know, I guess, the intentions, that's why the A license is nice to have, just not to be bound by that, by that restriction.
So can I add one more, Mr. Chairman? So this $2 burger thing, that, that is going to be a crowd. That block, if I was, if I was another real, someone else, someone who owns some of that real estate, or if I was in retail, I would be enthusiastic about having more people come to that part of North Broadway. Right now, it's empty. And I, and I will, the police chief and I might disagree a little bit, if we have more traffic, that's going to improve safety. The more pedestrians you have on the street, the more eyes, that's going to improve safety, I believe. I believe that this is going to be an economic driver for that block, and we need one. And that's, and the ironic thing at the liquor control, there was a gentleman from Moorhead that said, "If they don't, if they don't want you in Fargo, come to Moorhead." Moorhead would give these guys a free building. And so we're very fortunate, and I think you have to be very careful. What we're, what we're hearing from now is gentrification. The people in the million-dollar condos across the street, it isn't their kind of place. And it's like, our downtown plan, we want infill, we want growth, we want economic development. That's what this is. And I believe it will improve safety and not decrease safety. And I think the safety issue should be more on the liquor control where we hold the other problem bars accountable, and we haven't done that in the past, and we will in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Strand?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson, a couple, one little question. I mean, I'm, do you quit serving food at 9:00 PM or?
No.
Or is that when the family-friendly service ends? I heard that referred to earlier, and it...
Nope. We actually probably continue to allow kids at 10 o'clock. Like I said, Liquor Control Board too. It's not like we're going to kick kids out, but that kind of regulates itself as far as families and that type of thing. We intend to have full menu until midnight, and then there's a late-night menu until 2:00 AM after that. So there'll be food served all hours of the day.
And if I might continue, of course, you know, and all of us are doing lots of homework on this, and we're, and we're hearing from folks on every side of this issue, and I'm always trying to look for a middle ground if we can find it, and whether it's public health or law enforcement or the community neighbors, my sense is, is if you were applying for an FA license, this would all be settled, and we wouldn't have this discussion about what will be with an A license and so on. Is that a possibility from your perspective? If that meant we could compromise?
No, I guess not. I guess I would not be risking this investment, and I just wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable risking that investment, I guess, to succumb to that. I wouldn't be looking at Fargo. Originally, we had looked at Grand Forks, decided that Fargo was a little bit more attractive market. The reason for looking at Grand Forks is it's, it's a little simpler to get a liquor license as far as the restrictions and all sorts of different differences between it, but I probably just wouldn't be looking at Fargo, I guess, would be the answer.
If you weren't approved of this location downtown, is another location in town an option for you for your A license?
I've looked at plenty of sites downtown and outside of downtown, and it took a while to get to the site. Actually, looked at the site probably about a year ago. Was, was nervous about it too. Staring at the Empire from, from the patio, that, that made me nervous too, and kind of saw the potential as far as, it is a little less expensive to be on that side of the tracks as far as rent. There's just a higher, you know, just, it's not as much of a demand on that side. So it's just more financially feasible, and, and this space too provides the flexibility of being able to add a kitchen easily. That was another issue that we kind of continued to run into other spaces where you could get a kitchen, but it was going to be much more than the $250,000, I guess, that I explained to, to get ventilation and custom kitchen equipment. This one can kind of build right on slab-on-grate and be able to kind of build it normal.
I suppose if we had drawn your name out of the hat for that other location, this would be a moot point?
Yes. So this was kind of, yeah, I hoped to win that, I guess, was the, the idea, and kind of pivoted after losing that drawing to find a different way to bring Cowboy Jack's to downtown Fargo. I know at first, maybe this discussion kind of got originated by the fact that there was maybe the idea of potentially adding a second Z license to, since there was only two of us that applied. That suggestion was never on my part. I lost. That's, that's the way it is. I wish Lounge 64 all success at their Broadway location, and I guess I, I had to move on and knew that this license was available since Ground Round had, had closed business, so.
Very good.
I just have one question, and it'll relate to my comments towards the end of the public hearing. I think you just tell us who, a little bit about your background.
Oh, my background? Sure. I guess I grew up in Moorhead, went to the cities for college, moved back. Originally started Dave's Southside Tap, which is in Moorhead. Operated that for a few years, decided to, it was about over 10 years ago, started Dave's Southside Tap, still in business, then started Bulldog Tap shortly after that in South Fargo. And then about four years ago, I started Hennessy's Irish Pub, which is a neighbor of Bulldog Tap in the Osgood neighborhood, and then...
Which is a popular place for Bruce Grubbl, I might add.
And, and then I started Red Hen Tap House as well, which is in Dilworth. So I definitely have familiarity, I guess, with, with the different ordinances in town. You know, there's, I have my feet in all sorts of different directions, so I'm not going to say what's good and what's bad. It's definitely complicated in different areas and different cities, but, you know, I don't think there's anything that's going to be real black and white, I guess, for on this subject, but...
Thank you. Any other questions? I think we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll restart at 10 after. We'll call the meeting back to order. We're still on the public hearings in regards to Cowboy Jack's Bar on 506 Broadway North. If those who want to speak against the project, could they please come up and speak now? We get a lot of handouts tonight, huh?
You've maybe already seen some of this, but just a reminder.
Okay.
Thanks, Sally.
Thank you. Good night.
Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Josie Dance. I work at 420 Broadway, and I live at 408 Broadway, which, might I add, is not a $1 million condo. At the start of the last Liquor Control Board meeting, Steve Sprague stated the eight factors to be considered by the commission in granting or denying a license or a transfer that can be found in the City of Fargo's municipal code. However, they quickly seem to be forgotten. Under Municipal Code 251508C, considerations 1, 2, 3, 4, and 8 come in conflict with this specific transfer. That's five of the eight considerations listed that make this transfer an unsuitable fit for 506 Broadway. At the last Liquor Control Board meeting, representatives from Cowboy Jack's stood up here and told the Liquor Control Board everything they thought the board wanted to hear about how family-friendly their business is. They almost had me fooled. If they are as family-friendly as they claim to be, they should get an FA license. They can make the argument about how expensive craft beer is, but nearly every FA license sells craft beer. They can make the argument that it's because they have a $2 burger night or other deals on food, but the only reason they have these low prices on food is to get people into their establishment to drink. I've been to Cowboy Jack's, and I know the reality of their business. I had a much different experience than what they've depicted to our city commission. The truth is, technically speaking, their establishment may be fit for families at certain times of the day. However, it doesn't take much more than a simple Google search to see what the target mark is and focus of Cowboy Jack's business model really is. The parent company's name is the After Midnight Group, which alone tells you where the focus of their business lies. If that's not enough, an image search turns up photos of scantily-clad servers, women in very little clothing in suggestive poses used to advertise their food, promotions for happy hour drink specials through midnight or 1:00 AM, a logo of bloody cleavers over a longhorn skull with a slogan of "Whiskey drunk and hell-bound," none of which come across as very family-friendly. Not to mention promotions for adult-themed Easter egg hunts and drunks giving a drinking holiday the day before Thanksgiving. I can think, I can't think of any other family-friendly establishment that would promote events of such nature. It's been said in previous meetings that it's unfair that it seems Mr. Erickson is being punished because of the behavior or problematic nature of a couple of bars in proximity to where he wishes to open Cowboy Jack's. However, the reality is, there wouldn't be this concern if Cowboy Jack's were going to use this license to operate like a Ground Round or an Applebee's or any other truly family-friendly restaurant with an A license. The truth is, although they may claim to be family-friendly, at a certain point, we must recognize that that simply isn't true for a significant part of their operating hours. They cater to the bar-hopping scene, and they are open until 2:00 AM because they function like a nightclub. They can have family-friendly events, but those events do not negate how they will contribute to the already problematic nightlife in downtown Fargo, a nightlife whose side effects our police force already have a hard time patrolling due to their stretched resources. Mr. Erickson is obviously a good businessman, and Cowboy Jack's obviously has a successful business model, but this business is simply not the right fit for 506 Broadway. Fargo has a drinking problem, and downtown Fargo has a liquor license density problem. I get the argument for free market, and I don't necessarily disagree with it. However, this is not another women's clothing boutique. Alcohol is a drug, and it needs to be regulated, especially in the drunkest city in America. If the opioid epidemic is a concern to our community, why do we seem to think it's cute that we are the drunkest city? Why are we willingly adding to the problem? Just recently, the downtown master plan was passed. Nearly everyone on the commission voted in favor of that plan. The plan stresses a focus on creating a family-friendly environment, diverse housing, increased green space, and a balance of businesses, all of which lead to a greater economic stability and all of which are dependent on safe, welcoming environment. I am concerned that a lot of the development in downtown within the last year has set a frightening precedent that threatens the balance of businesses in downtown and in turn threatens the welcoming and safe environment we wish to, we wish to cultivate. Not to mention how it affects the desire... Not to mention how it affects the desirability of wanting to make downtown your home. This is not to say that I or others downtown are against the possibility of new entertainment or business ventures downtown that involve alcohol. The concern is coming from the recognition that not all liquor licenses operate the same. How each establishment will operate and what that business will bring to the downtown community should be carefully considered. The north end of Broadway, where the applicant wishes to transfer this license, is already home to two other Class A licenses and is an area of downtown that the Fargo Police already expend a lot of their resources. Adding another Class A license that is open until 2:00 a.m. between the Empire and the Bismarck could result in a possibly unmanageable scenario. However, it's not just the north end of Broadway that has issues. The Obi nightclub in Fort Knox area is another place where the police expend a lot of resources, sometimes pulling officers from surrounding beats to have up to six or seven officers at bar close. The truth of the matter is, yes, we need to hold bars more accountable for their behavior, but it's not just one or two bars that are causing the problems. Downtown has 51 liquor licenses, and our community is taking advantage of all of them, which in turn is leading to an overserved, under-regulated nightlife in downtown. Adding another Class A license to North Broadway, one that whether they admit it here tonight or not, caters to the drinking crowd and operates as a nightclub, will only add to the troublesome scene that exists throughout downtown. Not to mention, we would then have a nightclub requiring extra resources at bar close at each end of Broadway. How do we expect our already stressed police resources to manage this scenario? How do we expect them to stretch their resources to patrol an already oversaturated downtown night scene? The argument has been made that it would be great to have a family-friendly business on this block that is able to generate new traffic and bring new life to the north end of Broadway. In fact, a pretty bleak picture of the north end of Broadway was depicted at the last meeting. But the truth is, it is a vibrant area rich with retail and residences. Would it be nice to have even more traffic on that end of Broadway? Absolutely. I don't think anyone would be opposed to a true family-friendly restaurant. The traffic generated by any new business needs to be the kind of traffic that will positively impact the neighborhood both day and night. Finally, if this transfer is approved, it would set a scary precedent. If you allow this transfer, there's nothing in place to say the next liquor license can't move into downtown, or the next, or the next, or the next. It would be easy to simply approve of the transfer of this license to 506 Broadway. However, once it's granted, there is no turning back. They can tell you anything they think you want to hear because they know there are no regulations in place to hold them accountable if there are problems as a result of over-density or simply because of their business model. The more responsible approach is to deny the transfer and get a handle on liquor licenses in downtown and develop a policy that considers both density and the specific operation of each new license. I also encourage the city to establish a better-defined set of regulations by which to hold liquor license holders accountable. By doing the aforementioned items, we are not only taking into account the considerations listed in Fargo City ordinances, but also being more mindful of the future of downtown and securing the continued vibrant, safe, and welcoming evolution of downtown Fargo. Please don't be fooled by this idea of a family-friendly establishment, because it simply is not.
My name is Murphy Anderson. Thank you for having me today. I live at 812 Broadway North, and I'm here today to urge a no vote on the Class A transfer to Cowboy Jack's at 506 Broadway North. I'm concerned about the density of Class A establishments, the overconsumption, and the scarcity of police presence already in the area. As we know, there are two Class A businesses in very close proximity to Cowboy Jack's prospective address. I live and work downtown, so I appreciate new business and development, particularly those that inspire economic vitality and encourage family-friendly practices. But after reviewing articles and social media and from personal experiences, I don't believe that Cowboy Jack's is such a business. Nor do I believe that it will improve the problem that is already present on North Broadway. As a young adult, I do take part in the nightlife of downtown, and I am grateful for the bars and restaurants that stimulate relationships and responsible drinking rather than overconsumption. Cowboy Jack's is well-known for their drink specials and binge-drinking atmosphere. And though this may have a place somewhere in Fargo, the location next to the train tracks is just simply not fit. I live just 500 yards north of the location, and as a young woman, I should not have to walk on a particular side of the street or plan my walks home based on the time of day, but I do. If Cowboy Jack's were to move in, I fear that there would just be not enough safety resources or police present, and my walks home would become even more worrisome. Before we allow another Class A establishment in the neighborhood, I think we should improve on the issues already present, like overconsumption and shortage of the police presence. Cowboy Jack's in this location would not help these issues, but rather add fuel to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Murphy. Anybody else?
My name is James Starville, and I used to live at 420 and 1/2 Broadway North, which is just above Zambros, which is right down where Cowboy Jack's wants to move. One of the reasons I moved was because the noise pollution was so bad from people on the street, from the two bars. And I could only imagine that putting another bar there that caters to college students, as I was a college student in 2016 and went to the cities pretty often, and our first stop was always Cowboy Jack's, because it had the cheapest drinks and it was fun. But that's not a place you want to live by. And so after moving, I had to really think about, why did I move? The noise. And if you bring this bar, the noise would get louder and louder, increasing the traffic of these college students. I work with college students now, and I know how they operate. It just won't be fun. And my apartment was not $1 million. It was $500 a month. And so I am in the market for affordability, but I would not bring my mother to Cowboy Jack's, or my nieces, or my nephew to Cowboy Jack's, because it's not truly a family-friendly place. There are women in skimpy outfits. You might as well just throw hooters there. And also, drunks-giving. I participated in drunks-giving when I was in college, and it was, there were no kids there. But that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
I didn't prepare any remarks, and I wasn't planning to get up to speak. But I also live downtown, not in a million-dollar condo, but in a very nice condo. And I spend most of my time walking. I have a dog, which I walk, you know, evening and morning. And I enjoy going to downtown establishments where I feel safe. It's rare that I go toward the Bismarck or the Empire, and I think because that whole environment is poor. And I, poor in terms of dangerous. And if you bring another bar like this that has the types of, in spite of the nice things they said about the place, the kinds of things that will be happening after any families leave, if families do choose to come, which seems doubtful, it will be very unsafe in that area. I don't know how our police will be able to keep up with it. They can't keep up with the things that are happening now. And I find myself going home earlier so I don't encounter some of the things that occur late when a lot of people have been drinking downtown. So I am opposed to the idea of this particular establishment in that spot. I hope an actual, I mean, like an Applebee's or something like that, could go into a place like that. Thanks.
Did you just give your name, Deb?
Oh, Deb Dawson, I'm sorry.
My name is Peter Van der Voort. I don't live on Broadway. I live on Third Avenue North, which is just a stone's throw, so to speak. I can tell you that I am very much against another bar. I don't care what bar it is. I am against another bar being in downtown. I thank God that we have horrible winters here, because it stops the drunks from being in my backyard. During the summer, almost any morning of the week, I can look out my kitchen window and see someone urinating on a car in the parking lot across from my kitchen. During the summer, I find people having sex in my backyard, drunk, a woman having brought her customer there and had placed her child on my front steps while she did her duty with this man. I don't need this kind of thing in my backyard anymore. It needs to stop, and I know the policemen have far too much to do. As it is, twice last summer, the police had to call an emergency to pick up drunks that were passed out in my backyard. It is not my job to clean them up, and it really shouldn't be their job to clean it up. It should be your job to make sure that it doesn't happen. It's very simple to say, oh, it's a bar, give them a license. But it doesn't do any good if the people that the bar draws in does damage to the neighborhoods. My block, every day, people have been accosted on the street. There are people who we find sitting drunk on my front porch. There are people who go through my garden on their way home from the bar picking tomatoes. This is not the normal thing for a downtown, and another bar is just going to aggravate the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, guys. I'm coming with a little different perspective. I just started an electrical company in West Fargo. The market is actually slowing down a little bit. So something like this is actually very encouraging for me. It's something that is the size that me and a smaller company can take on. I would say the area would actually be improved by a nicer bar/restaurant. And I guess we can probably be honest, I mean, downtown is as great as we want to make it, it's downtown. It's the nightlife, you go down there for the fun. I'm not bringing my three-year-old and five-year-old downtown at 9:00 at night, I'm sorry. And I don't think that's going to change with one restaurant. In fact, I think it'll probably get a little better, because a hub restaurant like this, I believe, can actually improve the area more than the Bismarck and Empire have in that area. Sorry, I didn't really prepare anything. I'm just, you know, I'm very encouraged by this area. I've done a lot of work downtown, and this is actually going to be a new building, which is nice, because there's some pretty scary electrical down there. But yeah, I think this is something that can actually make the downtown area better, more clean on that north end. So I guess I would actually encourage a yes vote, strictly at an economics standpoint, and improving that area. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak? You'll be our last two, then, if that's all right.
I was going to let my daughter, she speaks much better than I do. But I do have to respond to Commissioner Pepcorn's statements. We have been downtown for 27 years. We've had difficulties with some of the local bars and liquor stores. We have not gotten a response from the Liquor Committee. We have talked to people on the committee before about, let's hold them accountable, let's put them on probation, let's yank their licenses if they don't do better. And for you to suggest that that's a possibility is meaningless, because we've got 27 years of history-
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that?
When I'm done, you may. We've got 27 years of history of no action being taken against these license holders. And Dave, I don't know when you went on the commission, but this isn't a new issue. And I just would really suggest two things. If this is really a food business and primarily a restaurant, then save yourself a lot of money and get an F A license. A big part of that $750,000 is buying an A license, I would assume, because they're expensive. Get an F A license, be a restaurant, sell liquor with food, nobody's going to have a problem. And secondly, I would suggest that before we put any more A licenses, and by the way, we're going to have a rooftop garden next to us at the Drunken Noodle, so we are going to have one rooftop on our block with drinking, not sure we need a second one. But before we give out any more A licenses and plunk them directly in between two other A licenses, let's get a handle on things, and we don't have it right now.
Mr. Pepcorn.
We just don't. And yes, Dave.
Just, so I'm the chairman of the Liquor Control Board, and so I'm telling you, we can do stuff to make them toe the line. We haven't in the past, but we can. I'm telling you, we can.
Have we had one instance where we have ever put a bar on probation, ever yanked a license downtown?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean we can't.
Rest my case. Thank you.
Anyway, once again, I'll just say, I'm on the Liquor Control, I'm the chair, and we can do that. And Eric, maybe you can look at that for the future, at one of our future meetings. But I do think we need to have, and maybe Steve, you can help a little bit, but we do have that option. The licenses are not theirs in perpetuity. And so I do think that's, I do think that's a legitimate thing. We haven't done it, but that doesn't mean we can't in the future. So, thank you.
Don, you're up next. Sorry, she's behind you.
Don Morgan with the Fargo Neighborhood Coalition. Downtown is considered to be one of our neighborhoods. It's an important part of the rest of the neighborhoods that surround downtown. And although, in looking at the drawing and the visual images, I really like what I see, I just wish it was something else that would be more conducive to us thinking about wanting to stroll downtown from the neighborhoods, feeling free to walk around and enjoy oneself. Thinking about, I've always thought about, you know, how wonderful downtown would be if it was filled with lighting and vegetation and nice places to stop off, sit at a sidewalk cafe, have a coffee, you know, and be able to relax. But I don't see how one could relax with this as it is being proposed. It seems like, as the young woman said, you try to avoid it, and the neighborhood around doesn't need any more degradation of the activities that happen there. So if we're thinking about people walking, and we're thinking about bicyclists, and we're thinking about children, how do they fit into the plan? As the younger fellow said, he comes down to drink, and he would, in the evenings, he wouldn't bring his child. But I am down here in the evenings. We have a lot of activity at the spirit room. We have people who come, there's no drinking, we have dances, and we have all kinds of things there. But those people don't want to go out on the streets and run into a mob of people who are drunk and unruly. It's gotten better in downtown over the 20 years that I've been down here, but I really don't think that we need to introduce something that's going to cause a greater problem. If only, you know, one could dream that this could contribute in a positive way rather than a negative way to what our vision for downtown is, I'd be all for it. But in the format that it is currently, I would be in opposition.
Thank you. So I'm assuming you're going to do a rebuttal? Is that what you'd like to do? Okay. Then you're going to be the last speaker. So I'm not going to go back and forth tonight, so go ahead and speak if you'd like.
Not so much as a rebuttal, more just kind of fill in some facts for you, maybe, or tell you some stuff that we've done and we've changed over the-
Just identify yourself. Gary's on the phone, so he doesn't know who you are.
Oh, okay. This is Brian Astmas. I'm from Cowboy Jack's. Me and my partner own the company. Um, me and my partner own the company. Um, we've got several locations in the cities, outside the cities, metro areas, and out of state. Um, there's been some things that were brought up. First and foremost, what we'd like to do is be good stewards of the community. And I'm not just saying that to tell you what you wanna hear, but we do that, and I tried to include some of those things in the packet for you. We've, uh, we've, we do a lot of stuff locally with high schools, we do a lot of stuff locally with hockey teams, we do a lot of stuff locally with hospitals, kids, autism. Um, we're one of the largest donors for the Polar Plunge for kids for Special Olympics. So we have a Cowboy Jacks Foundation that works with not only neighborhood, um, functions, but other things like Good in the Hood. They're a organization where you buy appliances and new furniture for people in need. So, we do a lot of good things as well, and we plan, we do a lot of good... We do these programs in almost every community that we're in. Um, we are a restaurant, we do sell alcohol. So that is part of our business, sure. Um, and our menu mix is very different if you look across the spectrum of the locations that we have. And so, um, if you're just looking at like a downtown location, uh, which is, you know, that's one of our largest locations, 23,000 square feet. Uh, we sell a lot, a lot of food out of that location. However, downtown, we are in kinda like what is now maybe like a block or a half a block out of the Central Entertainment District. Tons of volume, uh, there's a lot of traffic. We're open at night, we're very busy on Fridays and Saturday nights. There's no question about it. Um, but we also are very busy during our lunches and dinners, too. So, um, you know, that's kind of a, that's... We get a little bit of both worlds at that one. But we do have, I would say, the majority of our locations, we are far busier at 3:00 and 4:00 and 5:00 and 6:00 than we are at 1:00 and 2:00. So, um, and, and, and again, that's just factual based on our numbers. Um, we do offer happy hour, but we don't chase happy hours. So it's never been our philosophy. So what I mean by that is, we have a location on campus. Um, that's different, it's different than a Cowboy Jacks, but we have our normal happy hour. Um, and there are certain nights on campus down there where we just, at midnight, we're busy up until midnight and we clear out. And there's probably 20 people, 15, 20 people in there after midnight. Because they go, the students will hang out in there, we'll get all kinds, depends if there's a hockey game, basketball game. So our, our, our customer base is mixed, depending upon what's going on. But there are some nights where we have a lot of students in there. Um, but they go and chase, you know, better specials, for the most part. So, and there's a lot of places on campus that do quarter taps, dollar beers, $9 all-you-can-drink. And they basically, we kinda clear out, and they move to those types of locations. The downtown Fargo location is gonna follow our normal happy hour specials. So, um, and there are a lot of places in the downtown area that offer, um, a pretty good drink special. Um, we're not gonna kinda chase that like a lot of people do, right? So they'll come to town, they'll see somebody offering dollar taps, and then we'll offer dollar taps, we don't do that. Our happy hour is gonna stay consistent with the rest of the locations. Um, as Dave said, we do serve full menu till midnight, and we serve a limited menu till we close. Um, we hope that the people, a lot of the concerns that were said in tonight, seems like they're valid concerns. Um, and we don't wanna contribute to that, we wanna help it. And we truly would like to help it. And I think adding, um, a business on that end of the tracks, um, I do think it will help it. And I think there's some stuff that we can do to, um, to help it even more as well. Um, I don't know what the city and what the chief's appetite for hiring obduty cops are, but it's something that we do at some of our locations, and it's been very successful. Um, I like the program a lot. Um, I've talked to Dave about it, and we're in agreeance with this. Is it, if, if, if they do offer it, we'd love to hire an obduty cop on Fridays and Saturday nights to hang out there till 2:30 or 3:00. So, um, and that's kind of one of many things that I think we might be able to offer to help that block kinda run a little bit better. Um, is it gonna solve all the problems down there? I don't know, probably not, right? But, um, I hope that'll help us be kinda good stewards of that block and do our part down there. Um, just a couple other quick little things that I wanted to touch on. Um, our name, um, and I get how you could come to that conclusion, the After Midnight Group. Um, it was kind of a, in hindsight, we should've just said AMG, but, um, 'cause this has been brought up once before. But it was me and my partner, I've been partners with him for a long time. We've had a great relationship over our many, many years of working together. And, um, after we did our first place, which wasn't a Cowboy Jacks, um, we found ourselves still at the office after midnight a lot. And when we created our holding company, we kinda joked and said, "Well, we should call it the After Midnight Group, 'cause we're the only two guys still up working at this hour." And his sister overheard that, which is his partner. And that's kinda how our company name came about. So, um, that's that. Um, the whiskey Drunken Hellbound, we did, we have changed our logo and our, and our, and our, um, taglines over the years, too. Um, that's been changed for many years. Um, in hindsight, again, that, that, it was kind of something we saw on a bumper sticker. Um, and, you know, wasn't, wasn't probably the best choice. And so we have actually changed that, I'm sure there's some stuff out there still in circulation. Um, we sell a lot of apparel, and a lot of wing buckets and stuff like this, and coffee cups. And so, I'm sure you can still see it in some places, but we have changed that tagline as well. So, um, we are, we are a restaurant, first and foremost, because most of our locations, the menu mix, um, you know, is mostly food. But that doesn't always come out with the, come out with the numbers. Um, you know, um, we can sell a bunch of food and still not make the 50/50. And I understand Dave's concern with, you know, just, you know, it's a big risk. Um, uh, even if we didn't have anybody in there after midnight, it would still be a risk. Uh, so, um, I hope that's being taken into consideration. Um, and so, again, understand the concerns. Um, I just wanna be truthful, 'cause it does us no good to come up here and portray ourselves as something that we're not. Um, but we do sell alcohol, that's part of our business plan. But we are, we are really not a nightclub. Um, and this, the, 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 the theme of this is nightclub at all. So, um, I appreciate it.
Quick question. You're franchisor.
Yep.
Franchisee.
Correct.
How much flexibility, latitude you give the franchisee on marketing and promotion?
So, yeah. So it varies greatly, um, in, in location. And the one example that I could give you is like Altoona. So, um, Altoona is a franchise that, actually, we've now taken over management of it, but, um, they were a lot of latitude in a lot of food specials, um, uh, some menu options that we don't normally involve, uh, that we don't normally put on our menu.
Just talking about marketing and promotion.
Oh, marketing and promotions, everything would have to be approved by us.
So...
So...
I guess my interest is, the franchisee is not mandated by corporate saying, "Thou shalt market and promote this way." That's a yes or no question.
Uh, if I understand the question, no. We, we do, we do all the marketing and promotions.
Okay.
Yeah, so we control the social sites and stuff like that. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thanks, I appreciate it.
We'll close the public hearing and go into discussion. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Mr. Grimmer.
I, um, as the mayor heard me last week, as we've all had a lot of feedback, and I spent some time with some of the folks on both sides of this, this issue. I've discussed with Steve Sprague, you know, what latitude we have as a commission. FA, A, conditions on an A. And, um, you know, I've learned as of this morning, there are no conditions we can set. I think Mr. Johnson confirmed that, that we can't approve an A license with conditions. Um, 'cause my desire was trying to get to the compromise that Commissioner Strand had, had, had placed, um, you know, with a FA license. Um, I think we've heard testimony on both sides, particularly from the owner, potential owner, that A license works in this case, and he's made an investment. Um, and then when I compare that to, you know, Buffalo Wild Wings having an FA, N and A, both serving food, where do you draw the judgment call here on what's right or wrong? And bear with me just a second for a history lesson. I used to live on Third Avenue North, 25 years ago. There was nothing in downtown. Um, fast forward through the years, I also had the privilege of being one of the co-sponsors of the Renaissance on legislation, which has largely contributed to the success and growth of downtown. So as I evaluate both opinions on this matter, it's kind of, you know, where do we wanna go as a community? Um, and as a way of, I think this debate tonight, and the question Mr. Dance raised about enforcement, um, a number of years ago, Representative Lanning and I introduced companion legislation in the capitals of Bismarck and St. Paul to curb the binge drinking and cut down on the promotions targeting college students. Um, that hit in form, I think, at 9:30 on that evening, during a legislative session. And by 2:00 AM, there were seven bar owners in Bismarck ready to testify the next morning. Um, but what came out of that, as a result of not passing in either St. Paul or Bismarck, is that the bar owners got together to police themselves. Um, and I asked the question, Dave's background in particular, because in my opinion, um, here's somebody who has moved back to the area, made an investment, and is somebody who is willing to do the right thing and manage his business appropriately. So I put that on the plus side, and then the fact of the concerns that we have that have been raised here tonight. Um, and so, where this vote goes, we'll see. Um, but I think as we look at downtown, in particular, in Chief Todd's concerns, um, we have to figure out a way to be more proactive to address some of these issues. Um, and I think largely, the Empire and the Bismarck are kind of a corpus of this. Um, I don't wanna single them out, but, um, went to the bank this afternoon and I asked, "Where's the free palm cord on Broadway?" "Oh, we have to, we have to move that now so that people coming in that are transient don't see it and just walk away with it." And I'm going, "That's in a bank, not a bar." So we have some issues that we have to deal with. And I know that's about law enforcement as such. But I wanted to share that kind of as a backdrop to what each of us decides to do tonight is the right for the city of Fargo and downtown, and yet recognize, um, the challenges that we have as a growing downtown.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I put forth my comments, I'd like to ask the chief a question, if I could. Chief Todd? On our Liquor Control Board, we have representatives of public safety, law enforcement, and public health. And rather than just me reading minutes and notes, I'm curious your advice to us, Chief Todd.
Uh, that's a lot, a lot to put in my hands here, uh, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and happy birthday, Commissioner Strand.
Thank you.
You know, I, I think this is, uh, this is a bigger discussion than just one establishment. Right now, we have 51 liquor licenses in the downtown area. Uh, 21 of those are on Broadway, and another 12 are within a block of Broadway. And so, I mean, obviously, that drives calls for service for us. And, and our downtown beat is our smallest beat in the city for our police beats, but it's our highest calls for service, just because of the density. I think, you know, on Liquor Control, and we have a responsibility to look at how this establishment fits within that neighborhood. And I think that it's a beautiful FA establishment, that I would be supportive of if it was FA. But I think the downtown master plan that I was looking at says it needs to be a business climate. So we're looking at offices and businesses and retail. It needs to be a neighborhood that people wanna live in. Um, not, not a neighborhood where people feel like they need to move out of because of disruption, or, or being afraid to walk down a certain side of the street, or, or noise. And then it also needs to be a destination where people wanna come for entertainment. So we have to figure out as a city how to balance all that. And part of that balance, of course, is my department, Public Safety. I wanna just give you an example of balance that causes me a little bit of concern. St. Patrick's Day, we had a beautiful day for a parade on St. Patrick's Day. But after the parade, I was back, walking back from the beginning of the parade route to the police station, and all the bars had waiting lines of people with mugs waiting to get into the bars. Which, I think is fantastic for business, for liquor establishments. But that, what that turned into a couple hours later were a double in calls for service compared to our normal day related to alcohol-related activity. And what that in turn turns into are quality of life issues for people that do business downtown or live downtown. I think at some point, we have to ask ourselves, "How many liquor establishments do we want in the downtown area? How many..." And I don't know the answer to this. "How many do we want on Broadway? Do we want three Class A's right in a row? Is that gonna be problematic?" Um, you know, we've got another example of that where we have the old Broadway, the sports bar, Fort Knox, all right next to each other. And we'll tell you that that drives calls for service for us. We have to have officers migrate off of their beats during closing times, especially on weekends, just to be in that area to, to, to curtail problematic behavior. Um, so, those are the questions that come to my mind and the concerns I have. And so when I have a number of neighborhoods, people that residents and businesses that email me, send me letters, saying I'm concerned about this, um, I think it's, it's appropriate for me to express my concern. And, and, uh, so that, that is why, at this point in time, I voted against it on Liquor Control. But I certainly respect the other points of view, like Commissioner Pipcorn has. And we have gentleman disagreements on those kind of things. But, um, so you've kind of heard my point of view on it.
Thank you. Chief, part of the concern is that, uh, sometimes we think that striving this decision is two bars next to this bar. So one of the concerns is, do we need to do more in enforcement? When I was in New York, one of the meetings with the mayor's, one of the things that was talked about in the 90s, people were migrating out of New York City. Had a high crime rate, had a lot of stuff going on, it was very not desirable for people. And at that point, the city of New York put a lot of money into police, police force, and had a big presence throughout the city. In fact, you probably can't walk a block without running into policemen. And they also put a lot of lighting in as well. They put a lot of things to clean up the neighborhoods, in a sense. Would it make sense that the Empire is this problem spot to put more lighting in, put more police officers on the downtown beat? What you're describing is sometimes episodic. So, just like we do in ambulance areas, we have peak times in which we're gonna have a lot of activity. Do we, do we staff some of our guys? 'Cause I know, maybe Ozzy's getting pretty wild at night about 12 or 1:00, but in my neighborhood, it's pretty quiet. I mean, do we bring some of our officers on their other beats and put them in the downtown during those times?
We do. In fact, um, I'm fortunate to have Lieutenant Helmick doing, uh, security for our commission beating.
Because, I mean, in New York City, on New York Times Square, you actually have a police station right on New York Times Square. So do I need to put you guys in a trailer downtown? Or do I need to put you somewhere where there's more presence? So we curtail some of the bad activity. When I listen to the neighbors, one of the concerns is they don't dare walk down some of the streets, Broadway, at night because of people bothering or doing stuff. That seems to be wrong if it's a family-friendly environment. And if we wanna encourage people to live downtown. Truly, you get done at work or gonna wanna go home, John, you get done late sometimes. You wanna be able to walk the street without being feared or being accosted, so...
Right. And, and, and before I ask Lieutenant Helmick to kind of address his, his staffing, uh, plans and how he allocates people, uh, the city commission has worked with me on, on this plan of growing the police department with the city. And I think we've made a lot of progress in that area, and will continue to make progress as we go, grow. Um, so, with that in mind, you know, the other thing, because downtown is so dense, and because we are seeming to let a lot of liquor license in, in a particular area, are at some point, we going to have to ask for more police resources just for that area because of the number of liquors, licenses? And then who needs to bear that cost, based on the activity there? I think that's a question we have to explore. I think that's a question we have to explore further. Lieutenant Helmick?
Why do you always bring questions back to money? No, go ahead.
Because that's the bottom line in cases. But I'll ask Lieutenant Helmick to talk about our staffing allocations and things he sees downtown.
Evening Commissioners. As far as the staffing goes downtown, this year, we have probably the most officers we've ever had working downtown. We currently have 11. We have two open slots. We're hoping to fill those here before the middle of the summer. So that'll give us 13, in addition to our two downtown resource officers, which bring us to 15. So it's a pretty significant number, and it's definitely the heaviest staffed beat in the city. With that being said, over the last 12 months, we've taken 13,000 calls per service downtown. And when you look at the population of downtown versus other areas or other beats in the city, there's something out of whack. I don't have the latest population with me, but when I looked at it, the numbers, it's not the busiest or the densest as far as population goes, but it is the highest number of calls for service, which indicates that a lot of people come downtown, which is great, and that's what we want, but it does bring those problems that we have to deal with. And we do everything that we possibly can to staff, especially during those busiest times or the special events, St. Patrick's Day being a good example of that. And we'll continue to do that. No matter how many bars that are down there, we'll find creative ways to get it done. But obviously, our number one concern is keeping it safe so that people do feel safe walking on the sidewalk, no matter what time of day it is, and don't have to worry about what's going on in their, really, their front yard or their backyard. Those things are happening, but we'll do what we can.
Thank you. Mr. Garrick, I assume you had something to say?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. I have a few points here, so please bear with me. First, I think we are setting a dangerous precedent. What we have here is an applicant who has passed all the tasks. He's experienced. He's got a good background. And what the commissioner or what the city government is doing is we are signaling to the public that we should be able to choose what businesses go where, and we can deny you a license that you are qualified for, and you meet all the parameters for if we don't like where you are or what you are, even if it's obviously within our legal saying to do so. That's government overreach, and government overreach will harm downtown in the long run. Second point was that someone mentioned the free market while arguing against this establishment. For the residents that think that we have too many bars downtown, we should stop subsidizing bars downtown. In the past, we have subsidized buildings that drinking establishments go into. We do this often. We have created two Class H licenses that are the same as an A license just for downtown. And then we cut the FA license and the price in half and call it an FARZ license just for downtown, which brought even more drinking establishments down here. So if we want to stop the number of establishments that go down, we should stop subsidizing it. We've come a bit away doing that. We stopped giving out the FARZ license in that regard. Ultimately, there are smarter ways to limit bars if that's what people want downtown. You know, no one is saying there's too many bars in North Fargo or South Fargo, but ultimately, the city of Fargo limits bars just by the number of, not the locations they go to. Downtown and the greater community believes there are too many down there, we should limit bars by square footage. Because you can have a bar that's 27, 30, 40,000 square feet, or, you know, like JL Beers, which is just a few thousand square feet, and they can both get an A license or H license and operate, and we don't care about the size, just the type license you get. So there are smarter ways to do this. And so I agree with some of the things that Tony Grinberg said, and some of the things that Dave Todd said, that if we do want this to happen, we should do it in a smart way and not penalize Dave here for just trying to do what he thinks is right with his establishment. So what I'm going to do at the next, with the control board, is ask that we approve a consultant to look at our licenses, to look at people's opinions, to get input from the public all over the city, not just downtown, and give us an idea of what other communities have done, and get a best practice for the city of Fargo. But I urge people on the commission here today to approve this license because, again, I don't want to set a precedence where we get to decide as a local government what business goes exactly where and do those type of things on a whim. And I understand that people have legitimate concerns. I'm not saying they're not legitimate, but we need to have a process for that and not just a one-off. So that's my concern, and I will be supporting this A transfer.
Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my sense is whichever way this goes, all of us will be able to go home and pretty much rationalize our vote. And we've, I'm guessing, like, we've all heard immense amounts of information on both sides of this discussion. What I'm hoping we can do is find a way forward that's for the greater public good. And what I'm sensing out of this is that we don't have a clear definition of our desire for proximity or for density of liquor licenses. We just don't have that embedded in policy. I understand Bismarck has it and Grand Forks has it. I don't know what they have, but I'd be curious about what those could look like. And my druthers would be our liquor board would vet that discussion before we'd have a vote on another license. That seems backwards to vote on a license before we've finalized our policy. And I also want to respect the investors. I think we could have a compromise here and today if you just apply for an FA license. The neighbors would be satisfied, the law enforcement would be satisfied, the public health would be satisfied, and I'm guessing we would be satisfied, but that maybe isn't coming. Yet, just a few weeks ago, you were going for an FA license downtown until the drawing happened. And at 64 Broadway, wasn't that an FA license?
No. No, I was applying for a Z license.
Or a Z license, but yeah, okay. I stand corrected. So my wish is if we could just have this discussion about density and proximity before we would finalize this vote. And that being the case, just to float that topic, I move that we table this until we have a recommendation back from liquor board about what their recommendations would be if we would impose or consider any density or proximity regulations.
Is there a second? Is there a second to table this? Hearing no second, motion dies for last second. This is a real dilemma because the neighbors need one thing, and the new bar owners want something different. Problem I have is part of what's going to drive this a little bit is safety in the neighborhood. And to me, if it opens up, Commissioner Pepcorn, are you looking at the enforcement aspect of how to enforce the bars? I think that's what we have to open up and start to enforce the bars at a better rate than we are doing now. If we have to look at the safety of the neighborhood, we may have to put new lighting, we may have to put policemen on the street, we may have to do a variety of different things that the city's going to have to commit itself to. Looks like a pretty nice bar. Problem is, if I drive north of the tracks, I'm rarely north of the tracks unless I go see our attorney, Eric Johnson, at his office, but there's not a real reason to go there. I went to the Running Shops, very nice shop. I'm very concerned about that retail. But if you drive north of the tracks, that neighborhood's dying. Josie's went out of there. This place has been empty for 12 months. You know, what's the reality? What's going to show up? What's going to come there? Is there a possibility they do behave and have a good bar and have a good neighbor? So the commitment by the owners has to be that you're a good neighbor, or we'll be back here again because we don't enforce what goes on. And the reality is, on the Empire and the Bismarck, we better start enforcing. And any bar in town that's having trouble with that, getting a lot of calls for actions, because there's other bars at another corner, they're getting a lot of calls for action as well. Whether we like it or not, downtown's an entertainment center. It's where people go down. They like to eat, they like to do different things. If I look at it for a family, it's rather expensive to go downtown to many of the places. Maybe you have a menu that's less expensive. 1.5 million, Dave, in commitment, and 750, 2.2 million can be invested downtown. But again, if you look at what's going on in the retail space, I'm very concerned that that north side's going to go in a downward spiral, and we've seen that. Don, we've seen that 20 years now. Some goes up, some goes down, and it really has to be some balance we get there. But I don't know how many more women's clothes shops you can put downtown. I don't know how many more art stores you can put downtown. I hope the women are all shopping and the men are all drinking, but something's got to go or something's got to work somehow, so. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
What did Tony say?
Aye.
No.
Yes.
So we'll go to our next item, 31. Save costs for cost reimbursement on the FN diversion flood project cost. Cost holding 772, 390. Commissioner, Ken Costin to explain.
Yes, Commissioners, these are standard reimbursement requests for the State Water Commission. The funds have been expended for the month of March, and the first one is for 772,000. That's for the non-Oxpo expenditures. And the second one, B, is for 902,000, and that's related to Oxpo expenditures. There's a detailed list of payments attached. We'd ask for your approval.
Move 31A.
Please, second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
So this is Fargo's?
Yep.
Just to clarify, I apologize. If this is Oxpo, then I vote no.
This is Fargo's, right?
Oh, excuse me. The 901, item B, I think on the agenda is for Oxpo cost.
A is, A is.
A is the 772.
Yep.
Yep. So A is Oxpo?
No.
Then I vote yes. I apologize.
Good to be consistent.
Did you get it all?
I think so.
Mahoney, yes.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Item B, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 32. Consider adopting and amending a restated resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $98 million City of Fargo Water Revenue Bond Series 20113, or 2013, and amended and restated loan agreement with the North Dakota Public Finance Authority rating to the water treatment plant project. What a great project. Kent, you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll touch on the key points here. You know, the original application for this fund was for the state revolving loan fund, which is a low-interest financing provided by the state as federally subsidized. When we initially started the water plant back in 2013, there was an estimate, if you will, of the cost of the water plant. And since that time, interest rates had fallen from the time we initially applied to where we're at now. This particular loan, the interest rate, if we're rolling in a loan that preceded this one, that had been previously approved for about 15 million, what we're essentially doing is refinancing and getting the lowest possible rate, which will reduce it from 2% down to 1.5%. So that's a big hit for a big project. The other issue that we made note of in the note was the removal of the sales tax pledge. And you might think, well, why is that significant? Well, it's significant because the sales tax ends in 2028, and this is a 30-year loan, so we're going to not have sales tax to pledge to this transaction. The water revenue, rate revenue will be used as a primary pledge, and we also noted that the sales tax could be used if there's a deficiency in funding. So it's basically a legal declaration, if you will, in the resolution that we intend to use rate revenue primary. And then I think that was about all I had. The debt service payment on this obligation will be about in the $4 million range, which is similar to what the original water treatment plant debt payment was when we had outstanding revenue bonds. So we'd ask for your approval, the state water, or, excuse me, the industrial commission has approved this. We moved it there first to make sure that our agreements and documentation was in order, and they approved that a couple of weeks ago. So we'd ask for your approval of these agreements.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Please, second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions, Kent? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Submit a letter of support to Governor of North Dakota for opportunity zone applications submitted by the city of Fargo. Tony Grinberg asks this be pulled, and Jim Gilmore is going to explain it. Tony, do you want to make any introductions on this?
I just think, given the fast pace of the legislation that passed in December, we submitted an app, I thought we should have a little presentation on what was coming, little opportunity. So I asked Jim to say a few remarks, what it might mean for us as a city.
Okay. Yeah, the Tax Reform Act allowed for the creation of opportunity zones and opportunity funds. The purpose was to try to encourage long-term investment in lower-income neighborhoods and communities. We've, four weeks ago, you authorized me to submit applications. I have done that. I've submitted applications for 10 different census tracts in a community. The statewide, they've received 59 applications. And so there were, we had, I think it was 12 census tracts that qualified in one category. We nominated nine of those. There were 40 applications, and 25 will be selected. So I think there's a good chance we'll see at least census tracts nominated. There was another category where there were 33 eligible statewide, but only two can be designated. There were 19 applications there, so that one we submitted is a long shot. The next step still is for us to submit a letter to the governor confirming that the ones I submitted were acceptable. The governor will then select them, actually by the end of next week. So we have till Friday to get our letter in, and the governor will have another week to make a decision. I think long-term, we really don't know for sure how much investment this will drive. It's our intent to work with the economic development corporation locally, talk to businesses, and try to see what kind of interests there will be in these funds. There was a, I saw a story in the New York Times, though, that there's probably nationwide $2 trillion in unrealized capital gains, and so some of that could move into these opportunity funds. People that invest in opportunity funds can delay their capital gains taxes, as well as not have to pay capital gains, provided they stay in these funds for 10 years. So the goal of the program nationally is to encourage investment in lower-income neighborhoods for whether that be a housing project or new businesses. Real quick overview of it, but I think I view this as another tool in our tool chest to try to encourage economic development and housing in our community. We don't know for sure how well it'll work. The Treasury Department has yet to set the guidelines for the opportunity funds themselves, and so it's something we'll need to keep working on to try to encourage investment in our community.
Jim, maybe we can make a comment. We went through it and kind of made a census tract blocks. We kind of made a judgment, and we ranked west of downtown as kind of one, and I think we went north as two in the neighborhoods up in the, you know, outside of downtown, recognizing downtown has done pretty well with investment, particularly as we look west. You know, if this can stimulate, not to say that's maybe hard, fast rule, but we kind of put some priority west of downtown in those areas and north.
Is that six?
Yep.
Yeah, that's the census tract, kind of, is that western edge of the downtown, up to the interstate, including the Madison neighborhood. That was the highest rated. We did include the downtown. We included two that were recommended by economic development. It would include some industrial parks that could be job creations, and the others, some of the near-north side neighborhoods, the near-south side neighborhoods, and even the South University Drive area where, you know, we're seeing some vacancies in businesses.
Need approval? Move for approval?
Please, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 15. Installation of utility box artwork wraps in agreement with the Fargo BID, or bid, I'm sorry. BID is often to take medication, but anyway. Commissioner Pepcorn?
I just requested, just so we could have a little bit of discussion, I think it's a great concept and a great idea, but I just, the question I had was, so the project is 5,200 bucks. I know that we have, the Arts Commission is part of the community development, so I just want to know, is this coming out of their budget, or is this an additional? So that's my question for you. And can I just give you my philosophy? I think I'm more than happy for the city to participate, but by participating, I mean 10%. Right now, we're 90%, and the donors are 10%. I would like that to be flipped. I think it's a great concept, and I think if they would have asked, they would have done it, because it's a cool thing. I have a utility box at my building, and I would love to have it there, and I would love to donate, so. I think it's a great concept, and I think if they would have asked, they would have done it, because it's a cool thing. I have a utility box at my building, and I would love to have it there, but, and I would love to donate. So, I'm sorry if I'm rambling, but that's my philosophy.
Pepcorn will pay for the wrap and his.
Fire away.
I'm not sure if I should go through the whole bullet point presentation or just pretty much answer. It is part of the Arts and Culture Commission's budget that was approved in 2018, or for 2018.
Your brevity, you get bonus points for brevity, so it is part of their budget.
Correct.
That's awesome. Well, Larry, I apologize, but it is a legitimate question. I hope you don't mind that I moved it, because I do think.
What we decided is that the Arts Commission would have some choices in what they'd like to do to get more public art, Dave, and so, we funded them some money to try to do that, and that's where you're at. But it's not a lot of money, is it?
Right.
About $4,200 there contributing to this project.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, so, John, do you get my concept? I think we can.
Until you know its caricatures of city commissioners. Yeah, I do.
But do you get what I'm saying? That we can be, I like us being a part of it.
Yeah.
But, and I think we can motivate other people, so I think it's a great thing, and so thank you for that.
Can I have a motion?
I move to approve.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Tony, I apologize. Did you want to make a comment on that? You like to talk about art.
Oh, that's fine. I just think that that bid area, you know, with the special facilities, they want those things. That's how we can be a part of that kind of deal. We can offer the space for it. We can do a lot of things besides focusing on the dollars.
Okay, thank you. We had an extra item brought in. Because we're in a court settlement, we put it on the agenda for tonight. I apologize for that, but it's a consider settlement agreement and release property located at 4027 Copperfield Course South. Nancy Morris to explain. Oh, you are still here. I'm sorry. I thought you might have left with the crowd.
Sir. No, before you today is a settlement agreement and release. It's the culmination of substantial negotiations over a period of time, and I recommend approval of this settlement agreement.
Thank you. So, the difficulty is that we go to court on the 23rd, which is our next meeting, so we felt we had to put it on now to get a settlement, otherwise she'd be in court next two weeks from here.
That's correct.
Any discussion or questions? Commissioner Pepcorn?
Can you give us the Reader's Digest condensed version of what the settlement is, how close it is, or can you not disclose a lot of that at this point? Or whatever you can share with us, I would appreciate it.
I do have the settlement agreement and release in the packet. It does indicate the terms of that agreement. There, like I said, have been a number of discussions. It, to have an open discussion here regarding those negotiations may result in some fiscal impact to the negotiation, so I, it would be an opportunity, if you wish, to discuss in private. Otherwise, I would present the terms to you for your consideration.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, but I think we're safe to assume that your settlement falls into the parameters established in executive commission for you to work with. That's correct?
Yes, it does, and it is in line with other settlements that have occurred recently that have been presented to you in purchase agreements in the same area, in fact.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Garrick?
I mean, I'm a little bit uncomfortable. I don't remember the meeting that we had in the executive session, and I got this email relatively late in the day. So, I'm not saying it's not a good deal. I'm simply saying that I've seen deals go through that I voted against in the past that may have failed some of the ground, or so. I'm not going to support it, but it's simply because I don't feel like I have enough information, or I felt like it was rushed as far as getting to my desk, basically.
So, Commissioner Garrick, this has been a long and detailed discussion of trying